Like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. Tonight I've asked Council McClark to lead us in the invocation followed by the Vice Mayor and the pledge if you'd all like to stand and join us.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to gather tonight as the Sholo City Council. We are thankful for the moisture we are receiving upon our lands. We are thankful for the moisture we have received throughout this winter and we feel very blessed and very grateful. Thou hast seen fit to send that upon our lands. We are grateful for the wonderful staff who work here at the city of Sholo. We ask that thou bless them, bless their families as they work so diligently to make this a great community to live and to work and to be able to recreate here. We are grateful for the men and women in who are our first responders, our law enforcement. We ask that thou please bless them, protect them and watch over them, that they might return home safely to their families and that we might be a community that always supports and upholds our law enforcement and the rule of law. We are grateful, Father, for the members who serve on this council. We pray that tonight as we deliberate that we will do so in a collegiate and a very cordial manner with one another, that the spirit of cooperation and the needs of the citizens will be at the forefront of our minds and that as we are able to deliberate that we will be able to do so in a way that's pleasing unto Thee. We ask that as we go forward this night, that thy spirit will be upon us and help us to make decisions that will be for the very best of our community. And these things that we humbly pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Joining in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council McClark, Vice Mayor McCollum. Appreciate that. Alright, next item on the agenda is call the public. Any citizen desires speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city? Council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any individual. Issues raised may be limited to those with the jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to Arizona meeting law, the city council cannot discuss or act on items presented at the time. At the conclusion of the call to public, individual city council may respond to criticism, ask a staff member to review, or put it on a future agenda. And I have one, Chris Albuquerque, is that correct?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm coming here today because I wanted to bring to your attention a safety hazard that exists at the Aquatics Center. On the 13th, Monday, the 13th, I was hit in the head twice by regulation basketballs. I ended up having to go to urgent care because my neck went into a full spasm. I'm still under doctor's care at this time. I reported it to the head lifeguard and asked if the basketball hoop could be removed. He said you needed to talk to the pool manager, which I did. I went knocked on her door and I asked to speak to her about it. I was immediately told, I've already heard about it, we're not moving the basketball hoop. The kids have to be able to play. I pointed out that it was open swim and lap swim time between nine and 10:45. It's a swimming pool for swimming in, not for basketball. I understand that kids need to play, but the balls are regulation basketballs. They're hard balls and when you're lap swimming, you're not looking up. Your face is in the water. And the ball came into the lane a number of times. Children were coming into the lanes to capture the balls. I was swimming with another lady at the same time she was also hit. And she gave up. She vacated the pool. She said, I've had enough. I'm done. We have limited lap swim hours during the winter because of staffing shortages or whatever. We lose 11 hours of lap swim time. Our lap swim is on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, our time is from nine to 10:45. We have to share the pool with open swim, which isn't a problem. Everybody's there swimming. We have more people swimming, trying to do lap swim than we have lanes. So we have to share lanes. When there's even more people, we have to go into the open swim area. We should be able to swim in the swimming pool with no risk of being hit by hard basketballs. And I wanted to bring that to the attention of the council.
Appreciate that. Sorry that's happening. I could imagine. So just so I get this straight, there's the same time as slap swim as open swim, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
So I guess if staff could look into that and see, I'm not sure about the ball thing. That kind of a regulation ball in the pool, I don't know how the pool works. Definitely don't.
So Mayor, we already met with Chris this morning and a couple of our friends. And so we've talked about it and we've got some ideas and we'll come back.
Okay. Appreciate that.
But you see, the way that they did it to alleviate the situation was to remove yet another lap swim lane, which doesn't alleviate the safety hazard at all because now it just forces more lap swimmers into the open swim area, which is where the basketball hoop is positioned. Our suggestion is if you want to play basketball, then they need to provide those blow up beach balls so that if they hit you when you're swimming, you're not going to get hurt. I'm not the only one that's been hurt by these basketballs. One lady had two nails broken when the basketball hit her on the top of the hand. An older lady was knocked over last year and sent underwater when she was walking because of the basketball players. And it's a situation that shouldn't be allowed. It's a swimming pool. There's many basketball courts in the park area for people to play basketball. They don't need to be in the pool.
Well, it sounds like that we'll figure it out. I guarantee you. I'm sure staff will work with you if it's the balls or timing. I'm not sure because I don't know a whole lot about, you know, when that goes on. But working with staff will make sure something happens and I'm sure staff will get back with us and we'll get back with you to make sure something happens.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming and appreciate it. Alrighty, anybody else? I have nothing else. So next item on the agenda is special event. We have a presentation tonight. Sheriff Klaus and Chief Deputy Swanee. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us and allowing us to have just a few minutes. I know we're limited on that. But joking aside, thank you for having us to give a brief presentation of the updates from the major crimes apprehension team. Believe it or not, this is our fourth year that I've come here to give this and it seems like these years just keep going faster and faster. And we value the commitment and we value the partnership that the city of Sholo has partnered with the Navajo County Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement agencies in this county. We're renewing our grants and we're renewing our MOUs. And so we feel it's important that we report back to these agencies and to these cities that invest in our task force and invest in these multi-agency network and law enforcement services. You guys deserve that. You deserve to hear what's your investment. You deserve to hear what you're funding and what we are working on as law enforcement agencies. So just to quickly introduce, I know you all know the chief, Brian Swanee. He's going to come up and give a statistical report. And we have Wiley Williams. He's the lieutenant who oversees all operations within the county. He's our operations manager supervisor, I should say. We would have him do the presentation, but I don't think you want Wiley.
But if he follows him, he has to come up and answer stuff, right?
So we can direct questions to him.
Absolutely, Mayor.
And Sergeant Esparza, right? He's in the hot seat too.
Then we have Sergeant Kyle Esparza. He's the sergeant that's over all the officers that are on the team. Then we have Tori Gorman. She's our public information officer. These guys do a fantastic job. You're going to hear, you're going to see the statistical arrests and seizures and a couple stories or cases that they've worked on. Each year you're just seeing that their productivity just continues to go up. There is unfortunately lots of work out there to be done when it comes to the type of operations they do. It's not their motivation. It's just they need help and they need the support. And you guys have been giving them that support. We as the sheriff's office obviously give that and everything that we are providing with them, they're using that and they're making our community safer and they're making it different. And I see it all throughout every community and they're doing great work here in the south part of this county. So chief, give you a couple, then of course everyone, including Wiley's, open for any questions that you may have after.
Figures one.
Yeah, exactly. Alright, thank you Sheriff and Mayor, Vice Mayor, council staff. Again, thank you very much for allowing us to come and do this again. We enjoy coming to the city of Sholo. You guys, it seems like your mayor is always flinging something, some kidding or something at me.
Say anything about the glare or anything. Not a word.
Yeah, we're not going to get into the tough glare. Miles, where's Miles? Never mind. We won't go there. We want to talk a little bit about the major crimes apprehension team. You've heard us here in doing this in previous years. Just want to give an update for 2022. So first of all, we'll cover with the 2021 annual statistics. Just a quick overview, a couple of items of things I want to focus in on is the methamphetamine and the fentanyl pills. The methamphetamine for 2021, we're up just over 820 pounds. Fentanyl pills, specifically watch that number there, 622,000. Now you take this back to 2020. Y'all correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe in 2020, the fentanyl pill seizure was 30,000. And in 2019, it was very, it was like hardly anything at all. So each year we are not just doubling, we are like, my Blue Ridge math isn't going to help me out here, but it's going up a lot. And then a total of 137 arrests. But as I go to the next slide for 2022, whoops. You want to look at the, you want to look at the methamphetamine is down slightly, but also look at the fentanyl pills, 2.1 million. That's 2.1 million fentanyl pills that were apprehended coming into or through Navajo County, seized by these gentlemen back here and their team. This is a combination of street operations where they're doing street busts, search warrants at residences or what have you, following drug sales investigations and also criminal highway interdiction along I-40, along our secondary state route 260, US 60, what have. That is an incredible number. That's something I never thought I'd be standing up here talking that we took off 2.1 million fentanyl pills. In 2017, I was assigned to Phoenix over a narcotics group meeting. And we were getting ready to, we're working up an operation to purchase 5,000 fentanyl pills from a bad actor. 5,000 fentanyl pills. At that point in time, that would have been the largest seizure of fentanyl pills in the state. That was in 2017. And here, this is, we're dealing with 5,000 on just routine traffic stops now. They're seizing in the hundreds of thousands on smuggling routes and whatnot. Arrests from 2021 to 2022 went up from 137 to 228. But so just kind of an overview of some, just some quick proactive statistics from the team. Here's just another pie chart of the actual arrests. And I want to indicate that these arrests here, every one of these arrests are based on an investigation into major crimes, whether it's drug sales or conspiracy for drug sales or weapons charges or anything like that. Every one of these arrests require an extensive amount of investigation prior to and then even after the case or the person's been arrested, the case then continues on. So I wish I had an hour amount that I could attach to these numbers here. But I can assure you that there isn't a soul on that MCAT team that works at 40 hours every week. It's sometimes double that easily. One of the missions of the major crimes apprehension team is to provide agency support, agency assistance. And this is just a pie chart broke down of all of our partners here in the region, from the local municipalities to the Department of Public Safety to probation and our federal agencies. The federal agencies there, it looks like it takes up about a 39% of that pie chart there. A lot of that is due to one of our task force members is attached to HSI out of Flagstaff. So he works a lot of transnational interstate drug trafficking organizations. And so a lot of those statistics come from that one single detective that's attached to that unit. That's a great partnership we have with them because we're able to tie into the interstate trafficking where we capture something here, we'll roll it over to our partners at HSI and then they're able to further it across state lines and sometimes even backwards, back towards the southern border. So that's a good partnership there. Also, it just kind of breaks it down what agencies. Sholo there is about 24% assisting the city of Sholo Patrol and what have. I just put a couple few stories in here. This is just, like I said, a snapshot of what they did over a year. If I was to stand up here and talk to you what they did for the whole year, I'd bore y'all to death. I promise you that. And I would exceed my three minutes.
You already have.
So the first bullet point here is where St. John's County out of Florida reached out to our MCAT team and requested some assistance on an armed robbery kidnapping that occurred within their jurisdiction. This investigation, MCAT jumped on it, was able to tie this thing back to the Holbrook area and they were able to apprehend the suspect for St. John's County, Florida. And they also assisted with serving research. So that just kind of shows our interstate cooperation as well. In May of '22, an investigation started based out of the KC motel here in Sholo. There was a lot of traffic in and out of the KC motel. Detective set up surveillance and was able to generate an investigation. And they were able to serve a search warrant on that hotel room and some traffic stops on some people leaving the operation. This also tied into Phoenix PD with their Drug Enforcement Bureau and collectively some additional search warrants were done in the valley, tying this organization together. Ultimately 11 ounces of methamphetamine, 4,900 fentanyl pills resulted in 15 felony arrests, two illegal firearms and three residential search warrants. Again, going back to the teamwork, not only here locally within our region, but also within our state. And then the previous one is our interstate partnerships as well. Then in November of '22, one of the Navajo County K-9 units made a traffic stop over in the Heber area for a traffic violation. A dog was deployed, resulting in a positive alert. The search revealed just over 2,100 fentanyl pills and two weapons were seized inside the vehicle. This was an operation here, this guy, this individual was out of Heber. He was traveling this direction and he was selling fentanyl pills between Heber and the Sholo area. And so one of our Canines was able to take that off and then MCAT came in and followed that up and made an actual case out of it. In March of '22, MCAT detectives along with many of our partners, we know the Sholo PD, DPS Get'em and Criminal Investigations, did a search warrant on 16th Avenue here in Sholo that was a result of a three-month drug investigation for illegal drug sales. During that search, six Xanax pills, two fentanyl pills and 37 grams of methamphetamine was located. That doesn't seem like a whole heck of a lot in that seizure there. We just happened to get them after they'd sold everything. So we tried to time it where we think they're heavy, but in this case here, they'd gotten rid of most of it already. But they were able to generate sales on that. Another proactive effort was an MCAT detective was up in the Pine Top area, makes a traffic stop on Buck Springs Road for a traffic violation. Subsequent to that stop, the driver was arrested for weapons misconduct and approximately seven weapons and 37 grams of methamphetamine and 69 fentanyl pills were seized just off a routine traffic stop up in Pine Top Country Club. Again, this person is running around in our community with seven guns in the vehicle and fentanyl pills that he's selling. So that's just a quick snapshot, like I said, of the type of work these guys are doing. The sheriff and I were talking the other day about what it takes to be proactive and be successful in our line of work and just about any other line of work. And it's the commitment and the dedication that, you know, you don't go home at the end of 40. You push, you're constantly thinking about it. And these two gentlemen right here are a prime example of that. They never turn off. They're constantly going, they're constantly on the phone. I can't tell you how many times I pulled Kyle off the roping arena because something's getting ready to go on and we need him out there. And he puts his horse away and comes to work. But again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come in here and talk. And also want to thank Chief Provost for his phenomenal support of the major crimes apprehension team. Detective Neronho, Sholo Police Officer is assigned to the drug task force. And I can tell you right now, that young man represents not only the city of Sholo, but the Sholo Police Department in a very stellar manner. So thank you very much for allowing him to come and work on this task force. And with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Thank you guys. It blows me away when you look at the fentanyl pills of what you caught and then you think about what you didn't catch. I just can imagine. Thank you guys for all you do. Really, really do appreciate what we're catching. I know we wish and pray to God we can get it all, but that is absolutely amazing what you guys are doing out there. Anybody else got any comments?
Thank you for everything and the hard work. Thank you for helping.
Thank you. Our continued prayers and support of all of you are always there. We think of you and pray for you every morning and night and be safe. But congratulations on your hard work and your dedication. There's nothing better than our law enforcement in Navajo County.
Thank you very much.
Council Clark, any other comments?
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much.
I want to say something. I know all these guys, they're friends of mine. So I would be amiss if I didn't say something and kind of advocate on their behalf. I think Chief Swanee does a phenomenal job as far as being a voice for the sheriff's office and also Sheriff Klaus. I don't think people on the council or in our communities realize what a great team the MCAT's doing. I have a front row seat because I, and I just ended up dealing with a problem that rose its ugly head years ago. And to say that we have a phenomenal team is an understatement. Lieutenant Wiley's done an amazing job taking the team and making it a standard bearer, not only in the region, but in the state. It's great. And there's a quote here that I was thinking of as the chief was talking. I just wanted to read it. And it's indicative of the MCAT team because I don't think we fully understand the mental anguish that these individuals have, but also their spouses. Because I think, I don't know how many times, you know, Reagan's probably thought Kyle was coming home and he didn't because he had to jump on a bus or he had to do the, you know, or he had to jump on getting a warrant done or he had to do something like that. And the quote says, it's just simply, "People sleep peacefully in their beds at night only because rough men stand ready to do violence on their behalf." And the number of arrests that chief was talking about, they're not your shoplifters at Walmart. They're not the people who are out there doing, you know, little like minor traffic violations and stuff like that. These are some very, very bad ombres and I appreciate and I applaud what you do on a daily basis. I, as a citizen and as a father, I can't thank you enough for the work that you're doing to make our community safer. And I hope that you take that back to your teams to know that it's the city of Sholo, we will always stand with our law enforcement and that it's a vital part of our community's feeling safe and a place that the people want to live. And you can see that people are coming to rural areas that they're getting away from urban areas that don't value police and we do here. So thank you.
Thank you, Council McClark. Thank you guys for coming. And you say that, just a brief report, but you know what? I probably could listen to you all day on what you're doing all day. So don't ever say that we don't want to hear you because just the few that you did post there is pretty interesting, I'm sure for everybody. So.
Stay safe.
Yeah, thank you guys. And just closing, I promise we're to finish now. But we didn't come here just for you to say thank you, but I appreciate you recognizing what these two young men and what your officers doing. But more importantly, we came here because you guys have to take general fund money and invest it into this team and which takes away from the operations. We just want to ensure you that we're investing that back to make your community safer. And with that, it's a team effort and I appreciate you guys always supporting us in that. And the words and the kindness that you're showing to these men and the great work that they're doing is phenomenal. So thank you.
As Councilman Clark said, we'll always support you guys. We appreciate it. Thank you guys again.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We're entertaining a motion to consider acceptance of East tuning sidewalk, consideration of non-commercial ground lease, consideration of approval of data access exchange agreement. Next page. Consideration of approval of new national opioid settlement. Consideration of resolution number R 2023-08, approving and authorizing intergovernmental agreement, collection agreement with Arizona Game and Fish. And consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council regular meeting, March 7, 2023. Is there anything we need to pull? If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as read. I have a motion. I need a second. Got a second? All those in favor? All opposed? Same sign. Motion passed. Sounds like we might get rain. Alrighty, next item on the agenda, under new business, consideration of appointment of planning zoning commission members, Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The terms of four planning and zoning commission members will expire at the end of March this year. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying and two of them, Gentry Hatch and Jody Whitehead, submitted applications. Per policy, city staff advertised the vacancies and also received three applications from Jeremy Schneff, Derek Whipple and Don Wilson. The council conducted interviews this morning with the new applicants prior to the regular meeting. And then attached is, you all have been given a ballot. Council members will mark their four choices on the questionnaire for individuals they wish to appoint. After you mark those ballots, if you'll pass them back down to me, I'll tally the results and let you know who the four individuals are with the most votes for you to make a formal motion.
They're doing it one at a time. They can handle them all.
Think of that.
Yeah.
They're bringing the boat to get home.
I'm bringing the boat to get home.
Better recount, just in case.
We all went to Sholo, you know, on some of it. Now, I know why.
Okay, Mayor, um, the four applicants who have been uh given the most votes are Gentry Hatch, Jeremy Schneff, Derek Whipple and Don Wilson.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the ballots as read. Got a motion, I got a second. All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Welcome. Who else is still here?
Just Don.
Just Don. Wel- welcome back, Don. Thank you. Appreciate those people putting their names in there as well. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The terms of two Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee members, Christina Lewis and Joel Weeks, will expire at the end of March this year. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying and one, Joel Weeks submitted an application. Per policy, city staff advertised two vacancies. Staff received uh applications from four new individuals, Laura Beddick, Michael De La Sondry, John C. Hannah and Ken Van Winkle. The council interviewed um those that were available tonight prior to the regular meeting. And you each have a ballot. Um, if you will please mark your two choices for individuals you wish to appoint and then afterwards uh send them my way and I will tally up the results. Okay, Mayor, with um the most votes is uh Ken Van Winkle and Joel Weeks.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept ballots as read. Got a motion, I got a second. All those in favor? All opposed, same sign, motion passed. Did you say again, Joel and?
Joel Weeks and uh Ken Van Winkle.
Welcome. Appreciate that. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment to the Aviation Committee.
Alright, uh, so the terms of two members of the five-member Aviation Advisory Committee will expire at the end of March this year. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying and both of them, Lewis Booker and Gary Winslow, submitted applications. Per policy, staff advertised the vacancies and received one new application from resident from a resident, um John C. Hannah. Uh, the council interviewed the new applicant tonight prior to the regular meeting. Um, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash zero four approved by the council in twenty seventeen outlines the requirements of the Aviation Advisory Committee. This resolution stipulates that all committee members must reside in Navajo County with a majority living within the Sholo City limits. In addition, the council's preference, though not a requirement, is that at least two pilots serve on the committee. Um, you each were given a chart just showing what the residency and pilots um were. And um of the current standing committee members, um there's a resident and a pilot, actually, I believe three residents with two pilots. So therefore, the committee's residency requirement is already being currently met. So um, you don't necessarily have to choose somebody who is a resident of the applicants. Um, each of you have been given a ballot of the three applicants. And so if council members will please mark their two choices for the individuals they wish to appoint and send your ballots to me and I'll let you know who has the most votes.
Should I pass it back? Yeah. Can you count that? No. Of course not. Only when only when you're wearing sweaters. Yeah. I'm wearing boots in case you need after your toes or anything.
Okay, so um the two with the highest uh votes are Lewis Booker and John C. Hannah.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to accept the ballot as presented. I got a motion, I need a second. Got a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Congratulations. Welcome. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Alrighty, next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of Board of Adjustment.
Alright, this one will be a little easier. Um, the terms of three Board of Adjustment members will expire at the end of March this year. All three seats are four-year terms. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying and all three reapplied, which are Michael Gibson, Bill Johnson and James Zimmerman. Uh, per policy, uh, city staff had advertised the vacancies and did not receive any applications from new applicants. So staff recommends appointing Michael Gibson, Bill Johnson and James Zimmerman to the Sholo Board of Adjustments for terms ending in March twenty twenty-seven.
I'll entertain a motion to, got a motion down there, Councilman Alsop, got a second by Councilman Adams, all those in favor? All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Thank you all for for putting, there's a lot of um assignments that we had to do tonight and and uh lots of committees and we appreciate all the interviews that we got and all the applications we've gotten. I know in the past, there's there's times where we get none and we have to postpone it. So it's it's nice to see people getting involved in our 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 town for sure and welcome again. Alrighty, next item on the agenda, consideration of award of a construction contract for Sholo Communications Facility renovations, City of Sholo Project Number FM twenty twenty-three, Ms. Kirk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city's fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital improvement plan budget includes funding for the renovation of the former Sholo Police Station to house an existing or an expanded uh dispatch and communications facility. This building is located at one fifteen North Sixth Street. The expansion will accommodate additional dispatch consoles to increase the capacity of the city's capabilities as we move towards combining these services to provide regional coverage. Request for bids was prepared by city engineering staff and advertised per statutory requirements for bids were received. The results are as follows. LDNB LLC, nine hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars, sixty-six cents. Restore Pro Inc., one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand dollars and zero cents. Edge Construction LLC, one million, four hundred eighteen thousand dollars and zero cents. And Point Companies, one million, seven hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and zero cents. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for Sholo Police Communication Facility Renovations, City of Sholo Project FM twenty twenty-three to LDNB LLC in an amount not to exceed nine hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars, sixty-six cents. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cup. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
Um, if we could have the chief come up for a moment, um just for the audience's perspective on this, we've expanded our reach and um those kinds of things with dispatch. And so if you could kind of describe our dispatch operations for the public so that they understand this expenditure.
Yes, Vice Mayor. So Mayor and Council, um, we currently run a regional communication center. Right now, we dispatch for pretty much all of southern Navajo County. Um, we dispatch for Pine Top Lakeside Police Department, Sholo Police Department, Snowflake Taylor Police Department, Pine Top Fire Department, Timber Mesa Fire Department, Pine Dell Clay Springs Fire Department and Heber Overguard Fire Department. We are also currently in negotiations with uh Saint John's Police Department uh to look at bringing them on board into that. What we are looking at, and we have been working with Navajo County, uh you know, we're expanding this, but it's to uh further create redundancy. We have gotten some grant funding, ARPA funding. We're working on expanding the radio network and creating two dispatch centers that are connected, us and Holbrook. So that should one fail, let's say we have a train derailment in Holbrook, we'll be able to shut down and take over in in Sholo seamlessly. There's also, we've been talking about the possibility of trying to move southern Navajo County dispatch down to this side where the nine-one-one is all answered in one area. So those are all things we're working on. But a big part of that is that redundancy in service that should we have a failure uh on one side or the other, the other can take over. We've also been working with the state uh nine-one-one in creating what's called a PSAP channel, where we're con- uh connecting all of the nine-one-one centers in northern Arizona together on one radio channel. So the dispatchers at each of those centers can talk directly to each other without having to get on the phone and call. So if we have a major incident going, they can get on the radio and put it out once and it every dispatch center in northern Arizona gets that. So those are just in a nutshell, some of the things that that entails.
I I I can appreciate how how much hard work has been put into this as well. I know we've talked about this for a few years and it's nice to see that that's the direction we're going. I know you you've implemented for a while. Councilman Clark?
Yeah, Chief, what's the uh the plan for this? Like as far as the the timing of it? And when do you guys think that they'll be completed and stuff? Have you taught, if if we award it tonight? Do we know when like a completion date will be and all that kind of stuff? When to move in date can be?
Um, Bill may be able to answer that a little better. My understanding is we will have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and nail down that timeline.
Great.
Uh, but my understanding from the architect was eight to twelve months is what we were looking at on construction.
Great. And what's the plan for the current dispatch center located within the Public Safety Building? What what are you guys doing with that once everybody moves over?
Let's say move out of that area, we will probably use that to expand our support services into
Okay.
uh records clerks and that type of stuff.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Cup. Councilman Alsop?
Thank you. Um, man, Bill, it looks like the only thing that we can save in this building is the walls. The brick walls. Everything else will be changed out.
It actually, it's already been pretty much gutted. So it's 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 ready for the new walls and the new equipment to come in um so they can start construction. I believe Navajo County did the demolition in there and removed most of the interior of the building.
Now, it's a, I mean, it's it's definitely going to be a total remodel. So this thing, you know, it should last us a long time after we're all done with it. But yeah, I mean, it's a and we we built that way back when the fire department was built, wasn't it, at the same time? Mayor, do you remember that? I think.
I know um Chief Corder was in there when we built that, so that's been.
Been, it's been quite a, I mean, so it's it's ready to be done. So no, I I totally agree with that. I mean, if we're going to be using it and and uh at least this is cheaper than having to build a brand new one and get the land and everything else. So.
And just just back to the schedule question, contractor will submit an official schedule. They usually do that pre-bid and we'd be happy to share that information with council if you're interested.
Definitely.
Thank you, Bill.
Because I I believe um this contractor's got some other stuff that he's doing right now. So he he's going to get pretty busy. So it would be nice to bring that back to us so we know. Any other questions or comments or motions? Vice Mayor?
I'd love to award the construction contract for Sholo Police Communications Facility renovations, City of Sholo Project Number FM twenty twenty-three to LDNB LLC in an amount not to exceed nine hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents.
I got a motion. I'll go ahead and second that. All those in favor of the motion? All opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cup. Next item on the agenda is consideration. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your hard work on making that happen, for sure. I remember at one time we talked about that was going to be a records building or something or storage. It's like, wow, it's nice to see it turn into that. But anyway, next item on the agenda is consideration of awards of a construction contract for Sholo Lake Americans with Disabilities Act Boat Ramp Improvement, City of Sholo Project Number FM zero six five three, Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the city of Sholo is proposing a joint project with Arizona Game and Fish Department, AZGFD, to construct accessibility upgrades for the boat ramp at Sholo Lake. Project will be seventy-five percent funded by AZGFD and twenty-five percent by the City of Sholo. Project is located at Sholo Lake Park, thirty-three hundred East Sholo Lake Road, Sholo, Arizona. Work includes that it's not limited to removals of existing asphalt curb, sidewalk and trees, installation of a new curb, sidewalk, asphalt, pavement, ramps, handrail and incidentals required to provide a complete and functioning project. The request for bids was prepared by city engineering staff and advertised per statutory requirements. Three bids were received. The results are as follows. LDNB LLC, two hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars, fifty cents. Conco Concrete Specialist LLC, two hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars, ninety-six cents. Nav Apache Construction, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred nine dollars, thirty cents. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for Sholo Lake Americans with Disabilities Act improvements, City of Sholo Project Number FM zero six twenty-three. Sorry, I was checking that number uh to LDNB LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars, fifty cents. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cup. Do do you have a picture of that where it's located at show on at Sholo Lake? Just so we can show it to the.
Did a slide on that one or not?
There's a couple, over a couple and there's a slide.
Have some in here.
So it's it's on the agenda. I don't know if it's.
Well, I have it in there. I just for um.
Oh, there's a couple. No, just that.
Oh, that one was fine. I I was just trying to see if it was going. So it's it's a boat ramp? Is that what?
It's a, it's an access ramp for wheelchairs.
Okay, access.
So right now, there's a big steep stairway
Right.
located in somewhere in this vicinity. And they're going to be installing a ramp that switches back and it's folks that uh that need the assistance down to the boat ramp so they can fish on the fishing docks and and uh enjoy the.
I appreciate, I appreciate you and your staff getting this moving. It sounds like you've talked about this before in the past. So it's nice to see it getting done. Appreciate that.
So will they utilize the current um docks that are out there that are
Yeah, they're not doing.
floating in the middle right now?
They uh, yeah, we we had a kind of a tough winter this year. So we're we're, I think um they're getting those things wrangled back into position hopefully this week. Um, but no, it it'll just be basically from the parking up above, it will be an accessible route down to the boat ramp and the um fishing docks.
Aren't those floating out in the middle of the lake safer? Any other questions? Comments? Councilman Alsop?
Oh, maybe.
Question, if there's nobody has any other question? Go ahead.
I move to award construction contract for Sholo Lake Americans with Disability Act improvements, City of Sholo Project Number FM dash oh six two-three to LDNB LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars, fifty cents.
I got a motion, I got a second. Councilman Adams, all those in favor? All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Cup.
You. You.
Alrighty, next item on, on the agenda is summary of current events. Anybody down there? Councilman Adams?
I just wanna, uh, thank staff, you know, they've, um, between the snow and the rain and they've been working really hard in, uh, keeping our community, uh, and getting ready for summer. And I just wanna thank them for all their hard work. It's been a tough, tough winter and, um, they've done a great job. And I, I want to thank them for their hard work.
Appreciate that.
Uh, yeah, I wanna thank, uh, Public Works for, um, hopefully they don't have to move any more snow the rest of the season right now and, and hopefully just have to shovel up and clean up some mud that we have. But, uh, you know, for everything else that they've done this year, I mean, there's been ups and downs, ins and outs, but we've had a record snowfall this year and I think they did a phenomenal job for the amount of time they had and, and, uh, equipment they have. So I wanna kudos out to them and, and I wanna thank the pep squad for having me, uh, flip some pancakes for them the other day and for Saint Patrick's Day, had a great time up at Aquatic Center. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Um, real quick, I know it's a few months away, but just put on your calendar, the first weekend in May is the annual Sholo BBQ Throwdown. It's gonna be a whole lot different this year. Um, we have a kids queue. They're gonna cook pork chops. We've got monster burgers. We got, um, we're making it more, uh, public friendly this year. So we're still having the steak contest, but it's gonna be cooking from Friday to the Saturday night, live music, free kids zone. So that's coming up the first weekend in May. It's the monster burgers, um, you, you get to turn in a burger for the judges and then you get to build one on a sixteen-inch pizza pan, whatever you want. And I've, so of course, being the competitive guy, I went and looked up what other people are doing. It's amazing. I, I thought I could get creative and turn in something like a pizza, but that ain't fancy enough. So anyway, it's gonna be fun. Um, so first weekend in May. Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, on April first, the Recreation Department has planned the Wild Hair Three K Color Run Walk, which takes place at eight AM at the Sholo City Park. And then shortly after that, we have our hair-raising fun candy scramble and magic show, ten to twelve. This is for ages ten and under and it's at the Senior Field in the Sholo City Park. If you want more information, call nine two eight, five three two, forty-one forty. And Public Works Projects, we have the waterline project and these stones and mills. We've completed the testing. The contractor will begin working on the water tie-overs and pavement patching once the weather permits. And then we also have the pavement repair and repaving of the West McNeil roadway reconstruction project that's scheduled for around April sixth. Thank our citizens for the patience as we do these projects. Also, just wanted you to put on your calendars, the, we're gonna dedicate our fallen officer's memorial on April twenty-second at noon. This is right out here in front of the city hall. Everyone in the community is welcome to attend when we do that dedication. So just want you to put that on your calendars and it's on a Saturday. April twenty-second at noon.
Appreciate that. I, I changed my calendar already. Um, one more date to kind of remember, council members would like to attend. Um, I'm sure you've noticed that the Little Lakes have joined forces again to Pine Top and Lakeside and Sholo. Um, this year, the opening ceremonies are April fifteenth from ten to like two. And they'd love to, um, like, one of the presidents or one of the members sent me an email today and like to see us up there supporting them. So if you have a chance, I, I told him I could be there for an hour or so. But if you get a chance to go up there, it's gonna be at Meadow Plaza on Wooden Lake Road, April fifteenth. So if you can attend, it'd be great to support these kids for sure. Um, any other? Anybody need seconds? No? Schedule meetings.
We just remind you of our budget, um, some of our budget meetings that are coming up. We have our budget study session, which is the presentation of the city manager's recommended budget. That's gonna be on April fourth at six thirty. That's right before our council meeting, our regular council meeting. So that night, we'll start at six thirty instead of seven. Then on April the sixth, we'll have our budget study session with the departments and that'll start at six PM. And like last year, we're hoping if we can spend about two hours there, get that all done in one night, we won't have to do it another night. So hopefully they'll plan on just spending a couple hours with us, getting it done. And and it will only have to be one night that we're out of, out of our homes.
And if there's any issues with that date, please let staff know. Especially the, the third, the sixth, the one that, the study session on that Thursday. So. Alright, anything else? No other? Alright, seeing no more business before this council, I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.